I'll call the Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Let the record show today is October 31st at 9:03 a.m. We're a little late getting started, apologize for that. Ms. Camper, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance today?
I would, thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ma'am, appreciate that. Our live streaming is not live streaming yet, so we'll give that a minute.
Okay, just go because I don't know.
Okay, alright, we'll move on. Madam Secretary, recall the roll.
Commissioner Flower.
President.
Commissioner Candor.
Mayor.
Commissioner Prince. Attorney Clint Smith.
President.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, President.
Thank you ma'am, appreciate it. Amendments to the agenda? I've got a couple gentlemen. We've been asked to postpone Mr. Baker's request to be on the agenda until tomorrow. And the attainable housing vote has to be postponed until Friday. So that would include the three action items under attainable housing.
On Friday?
It's moved to Friday, yes ma'am.
And Baker to tomorrow.
Baker to tomorrow. Anything else gentlemen?
I don't have any.
Then we'll move on to approval of the minutes.
We accept the minute, pretty good.
Thank you. They moved and seconded to approve the minutes of September 28th, October 2nd, and October 3rd. Is that?
The 24th.
No, 24th.
October 24th.
What did I say, the 28th?
Just the 24th.
Oh, I brought in the wrong.
Got the wrong agenda.
Yeah, well, I got the right agenda, or the right board packet, but I put in the wrong minutes, sorry.
Who seconded that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve September 24th minutes.
October 24th.
It's Halloween Tom, you've been possessed.
He's already dressed.
Yeah, I've got my mask on, October the 24th discussion.
Well done.
Okay, good, thank you. Hearing none, or hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye please, no, once and carry. Minutes have been approved for October 24th, thank you. Weird.
Maybe it's your computer that's possessed.
Oh, let's blame it on the computer. I like that idea.
Blame it on the smell, we like it.
Yeah.
Vern said, he said because of the power outage that it might not.
How long was it out?
We'll press on then.
It's very Halloween.
Got your mask on too. We'll move on, audience introductions.
Anthony Irvin. Marilyn Hesse.
Bob Fulton.
Marla Hartbauer.
Thank you.
Two N's and two S's?
H E N M A S.
Welcome, glad to have you guys here. Thanks for braving the elements.
Yes.
Thank goodness we have to brave some elements, it's nice, a real change.
I love it.
Gonna jump on the hay season.
That's right. Commissioner's items, Mr. Candor would you like to start?
Sure, it's only been a week since, just seems like yesterday, we were having, a couple things happened, working on the airport, getting the staking completed out there, and now we're working on when to start the scraping and moving that berm. Had the engineers up here, we looked at it, and then we'll decide how many cubic yards of fill there is, and see whether we got time to move them or not before it gets too bad.
Good morning by the way, I didn't see you sneaking out. Can I ask a question about the berm if you don't mind?
Sure.
I mentioned to someone that we were doing that, you know, for aircraft to come in and go, and their question to me was, well, did you have to approve that with the FAA? And I don't have any idea in the world.
No.
Not something, okay, that's fine.
No, if we were going after federal funds, that whole runway would be a taxiway, and the new runway would be on the other side. And there is a plan to do that if we ever got down that road, but right now it's a private, or it's not a federal airport.
Someone just asked me.
Yeah, that doesn't fall under any FAA guidelines because that current runway is way too close to the highway, so.
Good news is, what we are doing is we're building, that runway's been tested, and even if it were a taxiway, it would sustain the heavy loads of big aircraft, and so we're good there, and the new ramp will be that way as well. And the reason we're moving the berm is because the wingspan on these airplanes hangs over 10 feet on each side of the runway, and if we got a crosswind there, then it hit the berm, so that requires a 10 to 1 to 20 slope, 20, 50 feet out, 1 to 20 slope. So that's what we're working on.
Thank you.
Falcon 900.
900 and that class and bigger, Gulfstream.
Your new plane.
Yeah, my new one, right? I'd love it, but we'll make it the Commissioner, candidate commissioners. The other thing was the strategic plan, the S brand, Cheryl Trent is working for us, she'll be here on Friday, set that up, and I asked Brenda to make sure all the elected officials and their deputies, in case they can't participate, but will come and listen to how, all she's gonna do is introduce herself, introduce how the plan works, and how we're gonna go about doing it, the process. And then, as I mentioned, we want to think about, there's two teams, one's the task force, which will be comprised of eight to 15, depending on what we decide as a group during that time. Mix of people that covers all aspects of Custer County, and then there'll be the steering committee, or however we want to name it, of maybe seven to eight or 10 people. So we'll see how that, what she'll recommend for us. So I'm looking forward to that. And then, Tom and I had a good time yesterday, looking at candidates for the extension office. Boy, we had four great candidates, surprising, very well qualified, and it's gonna be tough to decide, so, good candidates. Over to you.
Monday I attended the extension interviews in Pueblo. We interviewed the same four candidates down there, and then yesterday, of course, interviewed them up here in West Cliff, so that local citizens could have an opportunity to sit in on those interviews, and actually participated, we had five or six people.
Pretty good turnout. We had a good lunch, too.
Today, and then they filled out a ranking form for those, so they turned those into the committee as well, and we looked at those rankings afterwards, so. Yeah, cattle women prepared lunch for us, so they did a good job, we'll have to find what count we're gonna fund that out of, so we can discuss that with Donna on Friday.
Do we have a timing on when it all will begin?
That's a great question. They indicated that it would be probably a week to 10 days before they get the whole process through the OEO office in four columns of CSU, and then do a background check, then reach out to the potential candidate, they thought probably a month before they actually had an answer, and then who knows when the person would come to work. I'm hoping maybe by first of December, but it may be the first of the year. So, yeah, I was impressed with the four candidates that we had, we had five initially, we dropped one from the first round. And I say from the first round, I don't mean the first round of interviews, but when we had a conference call and looked at the resumes and all their paperwork, we dropped one, and we interviewed four Monday, quite a long, we didn't meet the same four yesterday, so. All four women, so wouldn't have any males applied, it was all female. And then Monday night, I attended the Fair Board meeting. They moved it down to West Cliff Farm and Ranch Realty because there was a meeting going on in Silver Cliff Town Hall. And then, of course, had the interviews yesterday here, so busy week.
Okay.
True, my support, thank you.
We, after the B O C C meeting last week, we met with the courthouse project. I thought we got some spectacular information.
That was great, don't forget it.
It was excellent, heard of lots of ways that we can get this done. I hate to use the T word, but looks like raising funds is gonna have to have county participation somewhere along the line, and we have time to worry about that. Other than that, I went to Illinois, I went to see the arch, I mean, that was a side trip in Illinois, I didn't go there to see the arch. If you've never been to the Gateway Arch in Illinois, it is a unbelievable experience. And that's about all I've done since two days ago, man, our last meeting. I've spoken to several people about things.
The Gateway Arch?
That's what it's called in St. Louis.
Oh, in St. Louis?
Yeah, that's that big.
You said Illinois.
I apologize.
It's very close, so you know, it's easy, it's ram across.
Yeah.
And they have a beautiful new bridge, you ought to go see, I mean, it's just artistic, it was very nice. Alright, so that's my travel, travelogue for the day.
Good, good.
Such as it is.
Good. Well, speaking of travel, I had to look up Sundance, Wyoming. I'd actually been through it in the last two months, but I couldn't remember it, and I kept thinking it was on the western part, but it's northeast of Gillette, Wyoming, so.
Big town.
Yeah, but it's a really nice country up there, but I kept thinking, oh, what was Sundance, and when I looked, oh, Chrome, I just drove through that, coming home from a county fair, so it was interesting. Your topographical, geographical input for the day, Mr. Candor?
In the secret.
You can come up with some, I guarantee ya.
I'll let it ride.
Okay, you didn't fly through some little?
No.
Okay.
Not today. This week.
Alright, anything else gentlemen?
That's what I have.
Attorney items?
Well, I don't have any geographical information, I didn't go for any motorcycle rides.
You didn't?
No.
You didn't hurt any cattle, did you?
Did you even drive today?
I did, I drove myself in today.
Oh, you did?
So, I'm getting there. After our last meeting, I talked to Jackie Hobby a little bit, I prepared a template for a cease and desist order, a little more detailed, based on the procedure that we decided we'd follow, and, and you all know what's going on with Mr. Shilton, we put that, tabled that for a little while. The other one with Mr. Carpenter, he was supposed to meet with Ed Lyons on Saturday and get things going, he never showed, never called him, so I told her, go out and get the notice posted, call him and let him know as well, if you can get word to him. He's got 72 hours to get anything out, and then the place is gonna be sealed up tight, and then we'll see what the next step is, if he breaks into his own property, then we go to court on it. If he stays out, then it just sits there like that, until he gets around to getting the septic system in. And the only other thing was, I got an inquiry from the Sheriff's Department yesterday, they got notice of a class action suit involving food deliveries that they've been getting, and apparently there's been overcharging nationwide by the company that brings their food, and so I advised Paula to go ahead and fill out the claim form and get on board, just like we got on board the other class action suits, and that's all I've done since last week.
Well, when you were giving your report about the whole cease and desist, and saying it'll be sealed up tight until they get the septic taken, I wanted to just respond, need your aggression, which is the way it should be, which is how it's supposed to happen.
Right.
Good or bad, but that's, you don't meet the rules.
And we did work, tried our best to help.
Absolutely.
And that's the beauty of being a small county, you're a face and a name and a personality, not a number. So you eventually run out of time.
It's just a sad situation, but it is what it is.
And there was another one we also discussed, and she was actually gonna go out there with somebody from Human Services, because there were some issues there, probably have to do the same thing with that one.
And they did go, yeah. That's all I can tell you about it, but, okay, good. Anything else, Counselor?
No, that's it.
Alright. Ms. Gady, would you like to get involved in a little show and tell since today?
No.
Let me rephrase that, Ms. Gady, I would like you to do a little show and tell today. Yeah!
I think she's gonna take that thing and stab you with it.
Mrs. Gady had a metal rod pulled out of her big toe yesterday.
The rod part is a little bit of an exaggeration.
Looks like a hat pin.
To my point now, you do have to show a tell, because I've never seen a rod pulled out of a big toe until this point.
Well, I showed it to everyone but Bill.
Well, I don't think, I'm talking about our guest today.
Okay, but just.
Now, now wait, Marilyn, come on.
Down in the corner.
Okay.
Okay.
Why did you put it there?
She stubbed her toe on the pin.
Stubbed her toe.
It was sticking out the end of my toe.
Isn't that crazy?
It's like an internal brace.
When they say pin, that doesn't, rod is supposed to be.
It's like a hat pin.
Sticking out the end of your big toe, that qualifies as a rod.
I can't imagine walking around with that for a couple weeks.
Isn't that crazy? And one end of it is hammering out to a little.
No.
And did they intubate you, and they knock you out to pull this out? No.
She's gonna make it into the trip this week.
Well, I don't know, Jackie can't, oh no, she's for this.
Knocked the ball off.
Yeah, he pulled the ball off, he was first, and then had to grab a hold of the pin.
Tough deal, man.
Yeah, otherwise you could hold it right up there, to the camera and show her.
Well, yeah.
That would need to be viral YouTube.
Could you put your toe up here so we can get a good?
Yeah, let's get a toe.
50 years, and they open up these records again, and say, boy, they had a lot of fun in those days, in the old days.
Yeah. We'd get one and a half million hits on a viral YouTube video.
Yeah, it's not, it's not working, so.
Not going there.
You missed your chance.
I can add something.
Go ahead.
I forgot to mention, I met with Ms. Lockhart yesterday, Laura Lockhart yesterday, about an Everest adult, that I'm very familiar with, been working with and helping, and she had major concerns about this gentleman being used by a citizen in town, and being, to be honest, and I feel we've got a really good plan going forward on that, so I just wanted to mention that.
Good, good. I'll get back to Mrs. Gady in just a second. I also was remiss in mentioning during the Commissioner's items that I wanted to congratulate you for a fine looking picture in the newspaper.
Oh, yeah.
With the Department of Human Services recognition plaque.
Great.
It was nice, thank you for representing us there.
I'm very proud of the department for winning that plaque again.
Pardon?
He did a correction, didn't he? Had three times.
I don't know, I just caught it.
I thought it was it twice.
Yeah, I was supposed to say it's two times.
I have to tell, I'm not running again, maybe they stopped posting.
Maybe you should. Well, good, but anyway, I thought that was nice, good looking picture, and.
Thank you. The real credit goes to the department that was able to earn that award, I just represented the county, thanking them for a great job they did.
Good, and I want to thank you for representing us, appreciate it. Any administrative assistant items to be brought before the Board this morning of any great consequence? No?
Other than a pin.
Other than a pin? Maybe you could make some kind of a brooch or necklace or whatever out of that. Any public comment today, this morning, have another opportunity later on, but welcome if you have anything to bring before the Board this morning, you're welcome to do that.
I just have a general inquiry about what's going on with the new courthouse, the land that's bought, is it a type for you?
I'll defer to these gentlemen, because I was out of town from the last meeting, which was Wednesday afternoon, so.
Starting, you can, yeah, we meet every month, and we're working a big plan.
Now, we being a Justice Center committee.
Yeah. And comprises of about 15 people, anomaly, and different, all walks of wildlife businesses to represent us and how we think. And recently, we were able to bring down the, what's their title, the Administrative Justice, I can't think of the title. The guys from the state, that actually build Justice Centers, courthouses, work with the grants and all that kind of thing, and helps counties grow, especially counties of our size. And we were lucky enough, we've had them twice, this last time was where we really, the rubber met the road, they brought a consultant down to look at how we're thinking, what our long-range plan is, where did we get the needs assessment that we've already done, and we've looked at and surveyed several courthouses, Alamosa being a good model to follow, and they suggested them, and they're helping us with the way forward, so.
So, and that's, Bill's absolutely right, and just kind of to bring it in a nutshell, we acquired, was it about seven acres?
Seven, 6.8.
Is that whole plot of land?
Surrounds this courthouse and the jail.
Right behind that, okay.
To the north of the, it's all the land north of where the post office is, that big lot.
I don't know why you.
South of.
And we did acquire it, it is county land.
Right, the county owns it now, that will eventually be the Justice Complex. They estimate that from beginning to end, the whole process takes seven to 10 years. We have started this a year and a half ago, got some studies done, kind of put it on hold, and now we're back into a full bore. This is something that is an absolute necessity for this community, if you've ever had the unfortunate experience, even as a guest, to go into the sheriff's office behind the scenes, you will know how, I will never say on live TV, the inhumane treatment people have, but let me, let me put it this way, we ought to be treating our prisoners much better, the facility is in terrible shape. The court that we have is, we have one courtroom, we will need a second one within the next five years is the estimate, and we could help with that, that's the 11th District, will help fund that. So we're looking at a Justice Center that will house the sheriff department, the court system, the jail, and we're not sure what else will be.
DA's, DA office.
Yes, the DA, and we're looking at a judicial center, then we would revamp the courtroom into, we're overflowing here, we have a few issues, for example, if you need to go upstairs to see the assessor, and you're handicapped, 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 and you can't get up the stairs, it's an issue. We don't have an elevator, and this, the building really can't be revamped for an elevator without just ridiculous cost. So this is something that we feel is an absolute necessity going forward, to meet the needs of the county, so that's kind of the timeline, and we're working deals on it, Bill's kind of led us, the three commissioners, we're all in the committee, Bill's really kind of been a driving force, heart of it.
And we're gonna try to drive it sooner than 10 years, and be, like Jay was mentioning, five years is sort of a goal.
Yeah. Optimistic, hopefully we can do it. Unfortunately, you know, it's gonna be an expensive project, as you probably guessed, the county's not rolling in money, so we're gonna have to find grants, contributions, and what else is necessary, we'll straddle that when the time comes. Trying to dance around, we, the citizens, may have to pay a little bit to get it done. We'll see where that all goes, but it's a possibility, but it's something that, this is not a luxury item we're looking for, it's an absolute necessity, so that's kind of.
It's not just space, it's safety too, the court, you know, it's tough to bring a judge by prisoners and the, you know, that kind of thing that we currently have, there's a lot of issues, and the jail being one that Jay mentioned, so it's a need.
Thank you.
I commend you for that, for looking forward, and, you know, there's not a whole lot of land in town, we're gonna grab that while we could.
We are the county seat.
And if I could also, if you don't mind, Bob, just for a second, I'd also like, the reason that we bought the land, first of all, you have to have a place to put things before you stop planning, an Arctic camp design, but the Hager family made a tremendous contribution to us, sold the county the land at a very, very attractive price, is carrying the note, I mean, they really need to be commended, and I just want to say, we can't talk that project without thanking them for a great job.
And without it, we would be nowhere, we couldn't get started. With the land, it's an in-kind match of several million dollars that we can put up and have buy, I mean, it's a great thing, way ahead.
Well, the first thing I started about, and I've been here a long time, as you know, is this building is great, however we've got Chrome, and it's not as functional as today, it's different today than it used to be, of course, but to spend a lot of money, you know, band-aiding it, that would not have been a wise move from a business standpoint, so I commend you for that. Now, I did just get back from a 3,000 mile motorcycle ride.
He has the geographical viewpoint.
Through the west, and what I will offer as a citizen, and I'm willing to pay with it with my tax increase, is while you're planning this, and it may be past you off, it may be gone, but plant the seed in that, let's build something that's, we're gonna be super proud of, and not only now, but down the road.
It's not gonna be a silver with glass building, not gonna be the Taj Mall.
But a coordination thing, and Alamosa is a cool building, it's beautiful, and it's got the library in it, and the police department in the back, what a great facility. Another one I just saw was in Bayfield, it's not as big as Alamosa, but Bayfield has a really cool looking thing, so, I mean, I say cool, but, and I don't know how, that's their town hall, but, but anyway, but the Alamosa.
Architecturally pleasing.
Architecturally pleasing, yes, exactly.
We want to match and be the, be part of Custer County, we want county to be proud of, because it is a center, and you're gonna be able to do all your business within this area, and it's gonna be very nice.
When Shannon, if he's still around, he arrests us, we have, well, at least we're going into a great.
Yeah, yeah, the inner bowels of the current sheriff's department's scary over there, those guys are doing a great job with what they have to work with, but something's gotta be done.
I was around when they built that.
Yeah.
Because that was a maintenance barn originally converted into.
Ronnie Camper's truck.
It was never designed for what it is, there's so many issues, I don't even want to go into, but.
But sometimes we could be Pennywise and tell.
Right, so, we're trying to, the three of us with our committees are looking, are trying to look forward to where we're gonna be, we'll be long gone, but hopefully the ball will be taken up. Another area that, and the only reason I'm taking this time is because we took a bunch of things off the agenda, so I think we have a few minutes to extrapolate at the moment. Our landfill is another one that we are trying to vision for the future, none of us will be here when that is, or maybe we will, well, hopefully we can get that expanded within the next 10 years or so, but we need, that is a, we're running out of space, environmental issues to get that expanded are significant. I don't know if you've driven down Rosita Road recently, but we have some water wells that have been drilled and are being drilled to test the water supplies underneath, to make sure we're not leaching into our water supply, and once those are done, we'll be in a much better position to go after grants and money for expansion of the landfill, so, and then, you know, we have a million projects going all the time, but those are long-term projects that you gotta do. I mean, I can't turn to a citizen, I'm sorry, your trash is your problem, go where in your backyard, you know, I can't do that, so.
But Jay, along those lines, it's okay for me to say this, I'll offer, where am I, I'm from Virginia originally, and. I, I'm from Virginia originally, and spent a lot of time back in Winchester, Virginia with my dad in the last few years, and Frederick County, Virginia, has the coolest thing, I think, for, for their landfill, because they have, it's basically almost a mandatory thing, it's a facility where you take all your stuff, and it's all easy to do for recycling and everything going to where it's supposed to be, to keep the minimal amount out of the landfill, and it's a big operation because it's a huge county, but those type of things, in other words, maybe, there's a lot of stuff goes into that landfill that could probably stay out, and I...
You've got a pretty good job, you've been out here, pretty good volunteer.
We just had, we just had a regional landfill meeting that I attended, and multiple counties and Denver folks were down. Custer County right now, believe it or not, is in a very higher echelon of recycling, we can always do better, but we have done a tremendously good job, our recycling efforts are great, if you see the bales of carb, but that's actually a revenue stream for us, not a big one, but it's a, it's a revenue stream for humanity in the future. So, we're working on a lot, we're talking about maybe getting a digester, an aerobic digester that takes, it'll, it'll break out the stuff that can't digest in it, it'll make it to fuel or other things that come out of food waste and stuff like that, so recycling is, it has to happen. One of the things that I know, I'm going to get impeached again tomorrow, but there are multiple counties or towns that have banned plastic, plastic is one of the hardest, it's, nobody takes plastic anymore, when you recycle your plastic in Custer County today, it's going into the landfill. I'm very sorry to tell you that, because the only two outlets that were available statewide for plastic have both shut down, China refused to take it, and therefore, is the problem that plastic can go nowhere, so we must bury it. So, the question comes up, Salida, for example, Chafee County, just passed an ordinance, serves about to pass an ordinance, where plastic is not, plastic bags for shopping and stuff like that, you cannot, groceries and anybody gives them a must-use paper, and then they're going to charge folks, if you go to the grocery store and you use one of their bags, bring your groceries home, they're going to charge you like a nickel or dime a bag, to encourage you to bring your recycled bag, you're mad with, so there are things that can be done, Custer County, that would be a hard sell, I believe, but that doesn't mean it can't be tried. So, yeah, no, you hit a real sore spot with me when we talk about recycling, because we're going to have more, more trash on this earth than we have water in the ocean if we don't do something soon.
And outlaw styrofoam.
Styrofoam is one of the worst things there is, and they have a new, they have a new, do you mind me taking my time for this? Okay, they have a, have a new method of making styrofoam that actually is made from vegetable oil that degrades in the ground after about a year, it's really cool. Here's the problem, it's expensive compared to old styrofoam, so convincing a company buy the biodegradable styrofoam as opposed to the normal styrofoam will be a hard sell, unless it's regulated, if you tell them you have to, and they, nobody gets competitive advantage by making you pay extra for your styrofoam if everybody has to do it. So, that's something that could be looked at sometime down the road. We don't really have anybody, any companies that I'm aware of that use styrofoam, maybe a couple of meatpacking plants use some of it, but it's not significant.
One of the great things for repurposing styrofoam is if you have a large planter outside, fill it with styrofoam, and then you'll have to put this much soil.
Yep.
Otherwise, I don't know how else to use it.
Mr. James, thanks for making the conversation with that.
Mix it with gasoline, it makes nade off.
I knew we had any extra time to any, so, you brought up some great comments, I want to tell you that we have a commission, are thinking these things through, trying to figure out what can we do to be a good stewards of the earth, but more importantly, good stewards to our county.
And I just wanted to go back and touch Alan Matzlos, was the guy's name, from George Cable?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, very good.
Last thing on my motorcycle trip, I don't know if we've talked about this over the years, but, could we do that for Custer County?
Oh, interesting, yeah, Right to Ranch, that's interesting.
That's...
Picture says welcome to Wayne County.
Matter of fact, if I'd brought it up, we do, we do have a sign deal going, we're trying to update the signs on the old county road names, that's a good thing to have.
Are we up and running?
We are.
Oh, the camera.
However, for some reason, it has attached itself to a 103117 meeting.
Nice.
Instead of a 103118 meeting, and we don't know why, we weren't even live streaming last year on 1031.
Oh, boy, it took me a while. Yeah, so it's a...
Could you forward that picture?
Sure, oh yeah.
Do I look younger?
I've seen that for years.
That's a good one, we can...
I've never seen it.
And there's another one too, and I can't recall, and I have a picture somewhere, probably in the 35, a Right to Ranch.
Yeah, which is what we are.
So, this way, what it basically says is, because this is right there coming into Ridgeway, okay, up over the pass, coming from, I turned around and did a U-turn and went back and took this picture, because I said, I want to take it to my friends and at the, at the commissioners, but anyway, so, you know, like Marilyn, you know, she has bought a house here in town, and right next to where there's cattle, and she starts coming to you all, because it's in the county, and complains that the smell of the cattle, well, you know what? Cattle were here before you, and so, that's basically what it says.
I love cows.
No, no, but you don't say that.
So do I, I just met him this morning.
You hadn't seen that before, Tom?
No, I've not.
Yeah, but...
So, I got a job for you.
Okay.
If you want to do it voluntarily, because we just started doing a program to replace, as the signs fall off our street signs, we've got county numbers, and those are, we have to leave those on there, because all the computers are key to that, the emergency numbers, all that, road, but they still have the old names of the, like Macy Lane, School Fields.
Which is all names I know.
So, we, that's right, that's how I grew up, but, so, we do have, and we do have the funds, we do keep the roads up, and we are replacing the old signs as they fall down and up, but we need help if we want to make them a little prettier, we can print the green sign and white letters, but if we want to make them ring with white and something like that, so I want, we got Gary pulling together a committee of some people that can help, and we can help police the roads with them, because he can't go to every, he doesn't, he only hits them when a snowplow tells him I'd hit the sign, or it fell down, and if we want to raise some money with some fun things to do throughout the summer, and to help bring the historic names back in to use, because it's really, from my point of view, you know, the roads are east and west running, the lanes are north and south, and so I can tell you to turn west or on Macy Lane, and that keys in, you know, on whether you're going south. Lots of neat things, it's easier than go to 323 and 126, where the heck is the...
So, what I'm hearing you say is what you'd like to do is have a combination of...
It has to be below the numbered sign.
Put a historic looking sign.
Yeah, yeah, they're old signs.
You were involved with that for...
We did that for Frontier Pathways in Pueblo, when you go to Pueblo, you'll see the street names, but the historic street names are...
So, I can get you the names of some people that want to help do that, to participate, and you can help muster up a focus for us, help the road and bridge guys.
Again, gets back to his pride there.
Yeah, it is, so that'd be great.
Keeping the past for...
Okay, write his name now.
Further public comment.
Joe Smith.
I'm involved with that.
Let me get that, how do you spell Smith?
Marilyn indicated she'd be interested as well.
Marilyn did, did you?
Yeah.
Good. Other public comment?
Hennessy, like the cognac, Phil.
Oh, I like that, we got it, Joanne Cooks with that, something.
So, H-E-N-N-E-S-S-Y, no superfluous, extra E.
She used her real name, Joe.
Okay, if not, we'll move on.
And Joe Smith.
First item of the new business is review the vouchers, sign the checks. Gentlemen, have you had an opportunity to review the vouchers?
Briefly.
I did, I just had, I mean, so many of them, it's hard to say, but, we're paying $2,000 for barricades, a rental?
Uh-huh.
What, what was that?
For the Hermits Bridge.
Hermits Bridge project, got it, no problem.
Yeah.
That's the one that jumped out at me, okay? Other than that, I didn't see anything, I'll move that we accept the vouchers.
Oh, seconded.
We moved it seconded to approve the vouchers as presented discussion, I want to have a discussion with our assessor, he gets to stay at the Hilton in Colorado Springs, and I've got to stay at the CCI convention, yeah, we're talking about that.
CCI, yes, those assessors know where to stay, don't they?
Yeah, I forget the name of the...
CCI and their cheap hotel.
El Gante Hotel in Colorado Springs, yeah, so, anyway, I saw nothing out of the ordinary, and I just happened to, had talked to Gary before, and he had told me about the rental on the barricades and the other signs, so, further discussion, because this is under new business, we allow public comment if you have any concern in the vouchers, obviously, without seeing them, I guess it'd be hard to ask or have a public comment, but...
But they are all in public.
I have a public comment.
Certainly, yes, yeah.
Just because we're having fun today, anyway, you know, I was an educator all my life, and asked to go to a conference, Mrs. Jones and I, we were given permission to go to this conference, it was still in state, but it was quite a drive, we were not given the funds to stay anywhere, Tom, so I had to call up a friend and ask if we could stay at their house for the night, so we didn't have to drive back after that, so, you know, you're staying somewhere.
Yeah.
Yes, count your blessings, is what she's saying.
Yeah, last year at the, at the winter CCI conference, I stayed at a friend's place as well, in Denver, and the conference was in Denver downtown by the state capitol, and, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't the CCI conference, because that was at the El Gante, but the legislative hearings were held in Denver, and I stayed with a friend, well, she lives in Platteville, which I knew that, but just hadn't really driven from Platteville to the capital.
You might as well start in Russia.
Three days, three days of legislative hearings, I'll guarantee you, it was miserable, I went every alternative route I could find, and none of them worked, oh, I said, I'll never do that again, so, yeah, it was probably 45 miles, and the traffic was just...
It's not 45 minutes?
No, that's exactly right, so, yeah, I get what you're saying, yeah, I'm not going to complain about staying anywhere versus driving, so, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor of approving the...
Vouchers.
Vouchers, as President Sally?
Aye.
Aye, pose name, motion carries. Gentlemen, we will initiate yours, and we can get started on paying the bills.
So, we wiped out this next one, didn't we?
Yeah, the attainable housing's been postponed, so, we'll move on to the S brand logo discussion. We had received an email from Mr. Bogel stating the position of the Economic Development Company and concerning the logo, I wanted to leave this item on the agenda in the event that they still wanted to come to the meeting, I don't think anybody's representing them here today, so, I think we'll move on, but certainly would allow any comment, gentlemen, if you have.
I have just one comment, I did speak with Charles about this, he said, do we need to come to the meeting today about the logo itself, I relayed to him our discussion in what, the last meeting, that we felt it was a private corporation, and government doesn't want to get in the middle of a private corporation, and they found a logo, knock themselves out, they're welcome to come talk to us if they'd like to, but it's not necessary, I related to him, and I guess that was sufficient, that's all I hear.
And I'll say one thing too, we still get phone calls once in a while about the county logo, it's not the county's logo, it is a private logo, like Custer County Realty can have its logo, and they can do what they want with it, and so, and I also want to make sure that everybody knows, we as a commission, board of commissioners, love dark skies, like the stars, you know, that's not the issue at all, so I just want to make that clear, and I'm going to have to call these guys back to make sure they understand that they can sure, I don't know if Charles sells their copyright, it's copyrighted, and so they must rent the logo to people if you want to put it on your website or something, but you sure can do that.
Well, I think they allow that with no charge.
Yeah, that's their business.
Yeah, but that's what they told me, that was...
I'd just like to say, as a fourth party involved in that whole process, Custer County Tourism Board, even though we had a liaison that represented board, and I just want to dison public record, the tourism board did not have input, we were not allowed input at all, we asked for it, to see the other venues to have a part of that process, and we were not allowed to see it at all, July 31st, when that came before the commissioners, I thought that was a part where the public would have input, not being told that that's our logo, and the county said, totally caught me off guard, I helped get that grant, and I was under the perception in dealing from top to the bottom, that the public would have input, public is other ones that would be like the businesses, say that collect sales tax, and the lodging venues that are a part of this, the general public can have input, but their input's going to be totally different, they're going to be recreational, so I just wanted to let you know, we didn't have, that we do have a member on our board that has taken it upon herself, not under the direction of the tourism board, to try to do some things. I think a letter needs to go out to the other three entities, while also to the tourism board, stating that, that we realize this is a private entity, specially card, they're getting ready to do the Discover Card, and they're calling it the county logo, and we have not approved that.
If you don't mind, I, I feel your angst, and I feel that if the tourism board as a group votes, votes to send out a letter, that's certainly within your purview to do that.
Should do.
It's up to you, I mean, you know, as a group, you need to decide, not just one person who's a little upset, and on the other side, believe it or not, go get your own logo if you want, the only difference is, hang on, let me finish, let me finish, the only difference is, you are a county entity.
Exactly.
That would need to get approved by the county before you could use it, so, we've kind of, we recognize that four entities were saying they were part of this logo, and it really was economic development.
Right.
We got that, and we, I think the three of us were a little bit concerned about how that all went down, but again, government doesn't want to get into private business, if you, if, if, if the tourism board was part of it in terms of, we recommend it, we're voting for it, and that kind of thing, which did not happen, then I'd say, whoa.
That was what the discussion was all about, who owned it, because if we had county money in it, that's different, we wouldn't have had to have approved it.
Then we would have said, timeout, guys, we're help funding it, we're not, we want more input, but when we've finally decided, the three of us, this is a private entity, make a private logo, knock yourself out, so, if you feel like a letter is appropriate, I would ask the board to see if they agree, and go do it, and if you want to have your own logo, you know, bring it to us.
Tourism does have a logo.
We do have a logo, but we do need to work on some other types of branding, whatever, and...
And we'll be looking forward to what you, you bring forward.
Exactly, but we need the timeframe, right now, we have...
You need to get your board open and running, you need to settle down, let the dust settle, take care of your bylaws, all those things that you need to get done.
The more important things that, now that that's not important.
Correct, not that it's exactly what I was going to say, it is important, but you have bigger fish to take care of right now, and once you can settle down, you have a functioning board, then you can look to see what kind of things you want to tackle, and I'll just tell you, the three, three commissioners are going to support you, and try to help you be the best tourism board that you can be.
Well, that's, that's my goal, is to get more, we're a team, and we're working as a team.
That is our goal too.
And that's kind of...
So, one, one word of caution for everybody to understand is that we got to be careful if people start using Custer County as a name that champions something as a county thing, that's illegal and wrong, you can't do that, unless we decide, and it's because it's about the county and the people of the county, what they want, and how they view the world, and we got to be careful.
Well, I feel as a board...
That's why you need to come to us.
We have a responsibility to represent, not just a logo, but we represent the people in Custer County in all.
We agree with you.
That's correct.
That's the spokes of the wheel.
We absolutely agree with that.
And that's what we have to do, we're not asking anybody to use our logo, I take it that what Economic Development did is, use this... I take it that what Economic Development did is use this as a marketing tool for what you want to do. But to say that had to be the county logo, I felt is wrong. If people were to use it as a marketing tool in addition to their logo, that's fine. But, um, and, and you can advertise, you don't have to have a logo or a brand. Sometimes pictures and everything say enough.
I agree. I think, I think we've beat it to death. I think we're concord with you.
Okay.
You will have your tourism board, and I don't want to say your tourism board, because it's our tourism board.
Right.
The tourism board will have backing from this tribunal sitting up here. I hope we've shown that to you this far, we will continue to get it.
Yeah.
So, let's move forward.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Other public comment? Even though we're not voting on anything today, I'd allow it. It's the chair.
I appreciate it.
Hearing none, we'll move on. Next item of business is the, uh, Mayor Outdoor Colorado Grant for the Bluff Project. Good morning, gentlemen, how are you? Come forward, please.
Miss Dan.
Oh, thank you.
Well, good morning again. Nice to see you.
Good morning, good to see you. Your hand looks a little sore than it did a week ago.
Good morning.
I'm good, thanks.
Hi.
Yeah, my first Colorado snow.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It wasn't a great one.
Oh, there's about sixteen inches up there.
Oh, you did get a good one in there.
Yeah, and it was so fun.
How far up are you?
Um, Old Peavy Creek.
Oh, yeah, oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yesterday we couldn't ask anybody where they were from.
Yeah, that was a weird thing, but.
But today we can, we set in an interview process and.
It would have been on their resume if we'd have gotten the resume, so I didn't see why that was inappropriate.
Commissioner Kanda asked innocently, I might add, where one of the candidates was from. And of course, CSU.
You can't ask that, I don't know why.
You can't be asking people where they're from because.
Those state HR rules, you can't ask anything.
Can't ask anything. And then you, you, you have to say a canned line.
I didn't even want to ask them how they were.
Yeah, I know. That would be offensive somehow.
Pretty soon you have to blindfold yourself.
Yeah, I guess, so can't look at them.
Yeah.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
This is a follow-up visit, uh, from our last commissioner meeting down in Wetmore.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a document from you.
From Clint?
From Clint, actually, yes.
Don't blame him.
Um.
So, I just, I just printed out what you sent over.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if, I didn't think we were putting any money into this.
No, we're not and that's part of the discussion today.
That's what we wanted to find out.
Yes.
So, let me, I swear, my computer's being neurotic today.
We have four computers in the office and three printers and I couldn't get any of them to work. So, if you want to see some of this stuff, I'll have to email it when I get home or turn my computer around so you can look at it.
Grant kept bringing up the agenda, so, yeah, the section three did speak to how much money the county was going to commit to this project. We had agreed zero.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know if section three needs to come out. I'm looking at the resolution.
Says authorize this expenditure of funds necessary to meet the terms of grant, blah, blah, blah.
So, do we want to leave that in there and put zero dollars or?
Or strike it.
I, I would recommend leaving it in and putting zero. That way, no one could come back later and say, oh, you forgot to put it in.
Yeah, good point, so.
Does that make sense?
Um.
Buying scheme.
Uh, in an amount not to exceed, uh, edit this real quick.
We just changed the words.
We authorize you to do nothing.
[laughing].
So, not on dime.
So, what would you like the wording to say then?
I think it could, from the standpoint of when I talked to Madison about it, who's the grant administrator, you're free, you're free to just put zero.
Okay.
Or no funds.
All right.
Yes.
But at the second half of that, I, I just have a little question about it and it says, and obligations of any grant awarded. But in fact, the county would be the financial agent, the fiscal agent. So, we would receive the funds, we'll account for it and we don't mind dispersing. So, in fact, we do have some soft costs involved. So, I, I don't want to delete the whole thing specifically because the obligations of any grant awarded, we do have obligations.
So, we're authorized on expenditure of zero funds and other obligations as required.
Yeah, they're not talking about our matching dollars here. I misread this. Really, they're, the Board of County Commissioners authorize the expenditures of funds in an amount not to exceed the, the grant amount.
No.
Not to exceed a certain amount necessary to meet the terms and obligations.
Right, of the grant award. So, whatever the grant amount is should go in there, not a dollar over it.
Forty-five, what, what is it?
We authorize expenditures of the grants that are gained.
Of the grant dollars.
Then, then I would like to just change it to not to exceed the amount of the grant revenues received.
Was that confusing, like we're going to match it with the same?
Well, when I first read it, I thought that's what it was.
We could easily, these things are fine to be changed. It's just they need to be changed and signed so that I can get it in by five o'clock tomorrow. But they, they consider these templates and they encourage you to be as clear as necessary.
Right, so let's clear that.
Well, if we write the grant and we're awarded the grant, wouldn't we authorize the expenditures of the grant funds?
And if you say it like that, I'm a hundred percent, we authorize expenditure of any monies received under the grant and that precludes us from adding any additional funds.
So, not to exceed the amount of the grant.
With no obligation for matching funds, something like that. We're not going to match anything.
Of the grant received, because we might ask for something and not get the whole amount.
Right.
Right.
But we haven't funded yet. Welcome to Word Smith and 101.
Okay, so, in order to move past this, we can, we can let her go and work with Clint, come up with the right words.
I think that's fine.
Well, it's one sentence, let's just do it and be done with it and then we're concise and she needs it tomorrow. She's got to go to nail tomorrow, so.
Yeah, I don't have a copy in front of me myself.
I have four.
Ms. Brenda's struggling to get a word in edgewise here.
I just changed it, um, the Board of County Commissioners authorize the expenditure of funds in an amount not to exceed the amount of the grant revenues received.
I love it.
To meet the terms and obligations of any grant awarded.
Solves it for me.
Okay.
You're limited to the grant fund, you need to limit it to the grant funds.
Not to exceed, that's right, that's what that would mean.
Brenda said it perfectly.
Yeah.
Because it has nothing to do with any matching or not matching.
Actually, I just wrote what you said.
Oh, that's why you're so brilliant.
That's why he likes it. That's why I thought it was perfect.
No wonder you liked it, yeah, exactly.
She'll give it to you.
Okay, well, I do think it's valid if you want to have it in there to just go that extra level of specificity and say that the county is not committing any of their own funds.
Not admitting any taxpayer.
We will have soft costs involved and I don't want someone to come back and say, wait a minute, it cost the county, you know, X amount of hours to administer it, that isn't exceeded.
So, you could say we, we recognize that we will be responsible for administering this expenditure of the grant funds.
Yeah, that's in there further, I've read it.
Is it far enough in there?
Yeah, so, I, I don't want to say we're bound only to that because we will have some soft costs and I don't want someone to come back and say, he said you weren't going to pay anything, now you're paying something. So, I would leave it the way, where it is so eloquently stated.
Copy news.
I think the other thing that goes in along with this, that this is probably going to help with the issue is that the, the, um, budget that goes in along with it, like I say, the, uh, the, um, the computers weren't talking, but you have to, you have to list every dollar, who's, who's providing it, where it's going to go and you're not even on there. So, um, basically, the, the sum total is that we're requesting forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars from GOCO. We are going to put in six thousand, twenty dollars in cash. We're going to, um, between, uh, the town of West Cliff, who's putting in eighteen hundred dollars worth of, um, work on spreading compost on the park and the rest, the rest of our in-kind match together brings that up to nine thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. So, you're on there in no place. The only, the only groups who are on there with any, um, commitment are, um, other than vendors, are San Isabel and West Cliff.
Uh, we talked about a part-time seasonal employee being funded through this grant. Who would that employee work for?
Me.
Okay.
Yeah, but I work for, I work for San Isabel and San Isabel has an MOU with West Cliff over that. So, they would report to me, but basically, we all report.
Who's going to pay the salary, I guess, is what I was getting at.
We will, we will, yeah.
Yes, I'll too.
Yeah, and that, that is considered, it's not even considered a, um, a direct, uh, we can't even use that as a direct cash match because it's a, it's a support position. So, it's part of our in-kind.
Okay, good. Good.
Yep, the only other people who are getting salaries, um, we wrote in here, I talked with the school and we're going to have a student steward, student steward program, easier to write than to say. And so, uh, what we hope we're going to be doing is hiring, um, some of the people in the school district to grow out the plants for us and plant them and be the people who are doing a lot of the on-the-ground work.
Well, that ag program should be all over that.
Well, it kind of fits with sustainable ways. One of the things that was really great about this is this required eight different letters of support and I learned a lot, kind of like this morning, learning about how much the recycling program does and some of the other things that are going on, but Sustainable Ways is trying to get a greenhouse.
Doing a great job.
Yeah, yeah, and we're hoping that the big overall picture someday is that greenhouse can do what our greenhouse did in Olmac, Washington, where, um, those kids, that, that ran the Voag program. It was a moneymaker for the whole school and people would go in there and pay double to buy geraniums because they were supporting Voag and they, they just, they sold out in no time. And it, and they ran the whole business, start to finish, they, you know, they had to do all the, all the tax filings and track all the numbers and it was just a great program. So, we're hoping that someday this could grow into that.
Yeah, yeah, we had a three thousand square foot greenhouse in Oregon, the daddy program up there that I taught at. What was your exact direction?
Yeah.
Cash cow.
Yeah, and teaching people really, all sorts of good things, you know, horticulture, business, yeah.
Absolutely, so, okay, well, um, so, is the board ready to move forward on approving?
I move, we accept that with an additional language that Brenda wrote on section three.
Okay, uh, and actually, this is the resolution, so, uh, I would assume your motion is to adopt the resolution eighteen dash eighteen.
Section three as written.
Yeah, and certainly you can take a quick glance at section three, it's only change made.
I will, I will second the motion to adopt eighteen eighteen. Um, but if I may make a comment, but I've made it before. I've been involved with this with the town of West Cliff. Uh, they do have a financial contribution to this, I've worked with them on that. Um, I've given them legal advice as to their obligations and responsibilities. I don't feel there is a conflict of interest since the county's role is very different from the town of West Cliff's role. So, unless council feels that it'd been inappropriate for me to vote, I feel I could vote. But I did want to put on the record that I, I've worked on this from two different angles.
Okay, thank you. We will, all three be signing this resolution if it passes. Uh, we have a motion in a second to adopt resolution eighteen dash eighteen. Uh, I just want to read a couple of things out of here. I won't go through the whole thing. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County, supporting the grant application for local parks and outdoor recreation mini-grant from the State Board of the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund and for the completion of the Bluff Park Enhancement Project. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County Political Subdivision, State of Colorado, supports the Great Outdoors Colorado Grant Application for the Bluff Park Enhancement Project. And if the grant awarded, the Board of County Commissioners and San Isabel Land Protection Trust support the completion of the project. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners requested forty-five thousand dollars from Great Outdoor Colorado to enhance the environmental and scenic conditions of the Bluff Park and its long-term educational recreational value to Custer County youth, residents and visitors. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County that, there's seven sections of this, or eight sections, sorry, that, I think, uh, the critical section is section number seven, if the grant is awarded, the Board of County Commissioners hereby authorizes the executive director of San Isabel Land Trust to sign the grant agreement with the Great Outdoors Colorado.
I'm fine with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, that, a number that needs to go in the second paragraph at the top is forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty. I'm sorry, this was, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Brenda, forty-five thousand, three hundred and?
Forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty.
Okay, I would move to amend the resolution to change the, uh, request amount to four thousand, forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, I, I like that, but before, I had, do have a comment.
Okay, you have a second.
I'll second it, he seconded.
Okay, it's been moved to second and to amend the resolution. No.
No, to amend.
Oh, amended, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, uh, we can vote on that.
Okay, uh, discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, we proceed to vote all in favor, say aye. Posnae, aye, posnae, motion carries. The resolution will be amended now to read four thousand, forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
So, so my only comments are, just to clarify this, um, in general, this is a resolution that is, the county is championing and saying, we, we agree and we'd like to partner with the San Isabel Land Trust. They don't work for us, right?
Correct.
And so, so the only confusing language to me is that we are authorizing them to sign the grant, which they don't work.
Well, no, but we're, we're applying for the grant.
Well, we're, we're, so, so they're going to, so that's my question. We authorize them to act as us to sign it, as opposed to us signing it or anything?
We're making them the agent to allow them to go forward with the grant based on these parameters.
That makes them the agent, so when we say we're authorizing them to do it, we don't have to have some other language that, that we're partnering with them?
No, I've got it. The IGA is.
Is, is good enough? Okay, that's all my question was, just so that the common citizen, like me, that picks it up and looks at it, is confused that San Isabel has not got anything to do with the county other than their own.
That's correct, right.
Okay.
The law has nothing to do with us.
That's right.
It's a faggot, it's organization. We should talk to them, we really support it.
So, we're just partnering with them and that's good news.
That is, that Bluff is one of the gems of our county.
Thank you, wait.
Stop right there, I know you're going to make a greater.
Yeah, wait, wait until two years from now when there's.
Because they make the Bluff pretty.
Further discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, uh, public comment pertaining to the adoption of resolution eighteen dash eighteen. Hearing none, we proceed to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnae, motion carries, the resolution has been adopted. We'll take a brief minute and sign that.
Do you want to have a print of what the right amount of money on?
It is, this is the new one.
She's, she's really good.
She may be crippled, but she's on top of it back there.
Um, you need, I think, someone needs to let Donna know as soon as possible so we can get that on the.
Out the door.
Budgets for next year or, I don't, when do we find out if we get that?
March, the end of the first week of March. I don't know how that works.
Yeah, but Donna should be.
Need a word? Brenda's already got it.
She may be aware right now, or are we live streaming or no?
We are, and maybe Virginia.
Yeah.
Uh, sorry.
You need a copy of the document?
I didn't mean to start handing it back, but Kelly needs to attest it. Uh, okay, then, uh, that being done, I'd like to discuss the, uh.
You're going to make this up.
Assuming my computer's going to work.
Keep mine away in case it's contagious.
Don't get it up there close to mine, uh, the letter of support. Let me see, Bluff Park Letter of Support.
Oh, and we don't need one from you. What we will, what we do have to put in with this, because you're the, you're the fiscal sponsor. So, they, they assume.
You're right, that we support it, sure.
Actually, you say that in here, um, but the other piece of that is. Actually, you say that in here, um, but the other piece of that is we have to put in the draft, uh, what I showed you last week was the intergovernmental agreement. Brenda corrected me because we're not the government, what we need to write is an MOU. And I called, I called Madison and all he had to do is just, and I've done it. I just changed the name at the top of it to memorandum of understanding.
This is a copy of a letter, I'm assuming that, that?
Wait a second.
Uh, let me?
Oh, yes, I do, resolutions, oh, that's.
Bluff Park Enhancement Project Summary starts out with the Custer County Board of County Commissioners requesting funds and at the bottom, uh, basically says you can help by writing a short but persuasive letter.
Uh huh.
Did that come from you?
That came from me.
Okay.
Uh oh.
And so that really is coming from us because we're the grant writer. We're the grant applicant, applicant. I'm all glad that S I L T's gonna do it.
Right, it's, the way that they talk about it is that there is a primary contact. And Madison said that it's very frequent in these circumstances where there is a non, a non-eligible applicant, which is what we are, it has to go through a municipality. The sponsor, all they do is agree to sponsor it and to hold the money and disperse it, usually only in two checks. So once we do a certain amount of work, you can write, you can write one check to let us get started and when we get done, you can write a second check. That's the way it usually goes to minimize the work to you. Um, in, in asking people to write the letters, I saw, you know, I said, this is really all three of us working together.
Right, I see, yeah.
When the letters came back, and if you're interested, here, here they are. Um, some of them, some of them said Custer County, some of them said San Isabel, and some of them said both.
Back from where?
Um, citizens or groups.
Are you interested where they came from? Cause they are pretty neat. So Valley Park and Recreation, Valley Park Recreation and Youth, um, the Town of West Cliff, High Mountain Hay Fever, Custer County Chamber of Commerce. My very favorite one was from the school district. And I think I'm got one here.
Great.
Yep, Dick and Audrey Sturmer, because they're the neighbors, and Trails for All.
Is there still time when there's more letters of support?
Uh, we're only able to do it seven, yeah? They have, they have a cap, but I, what I'm finding is that these things are gonna be useful in a lot of different ways and we would love to have another, another one.
With frontier pathways.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we've had, I've been in your position with the county commissioners in the past when, when we, you know, had, had funds come in, had, had the county as the agent, same type of thing. Just basically have to channel the money through from the grant, a grantor.
Good, and that went okay?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Good.
You've run a lot of money through this county.
Good, well, I, I, I found it, I found it just really inspiring to get all those letters and to, you know, part of what people were supposed to do when they wrote the letters was not talk about, about our proposal so much as to talk about what they do for the community. You know, how many, how many constituents they have, the diversity of people that are part of it, what their long-term goals are, and if there's any role that the Bluff could play in that. And, and it was really inspiring, you know, I'm pretty, I'm pretty excited about where this project could go, which is a good thing, cause, um, it's more money than the board wanted me to put in there, but I think it's important, so we'll do it.
I'm certainly willing to talk about the elephant in the room, cause I'm probably the only one that thinks there's an elephant in the room.
Which is?
Uh, in reference to your, uh, poster the other day, our meeting in Wetmore.
Oh.
Is there a possibility that this project might include the first roundabout in Custer County?
No, not on our part. And it's not gonna, and it's not gonna include the first, or the first, it's not even the first, the second amphitheater. Yeah, I don't know if, if you were familiar with the long-term history of this, but there was a point where that was, there was gonna be two and a half million dollars raised and, and it was, it was gonna be very, very different from what it would be. Nothing that we're doing precludes, you know, if the community decides somewhere down the road that's what they wanna do, and if they can fundraise behind it, great, we won't stand in the way of that, but, um?
The amphitheater is where the proposed parking is now.
Well, actually not, yeah.
Down the northwest corner.
Yeah, so where it slants down there and then the parking lot's right here is kinda, oh, I had a picture.
Heads for the bond.
Did your picture have a roundabout in it?
No, it doesn't. You're welcome. So the amphitheater was gonna be right here, this is the parking lot.
Right.
And so what we're talking about doing down here is maybe making that part of the outdoor classroom that we do with Custer County Schools and have, um, put some, put some natural looking things to climb on, sit on, be able to have like a classroom area when they want the kids to sit down and be able to focus and then be able to go out from there. So, um, there'll be things for them to be able to crawl on, low height, all, you know, professionally set up so nobody, nobody falls off and breaks their noggin. But, um, other than that, I think what we're gonna do down there, because that is just so brutally without any topsoil, it just, it won't even grow weeds very well. Um, I think that'll probably end up being an area where we do a lot of the xeriscate and coming up with low water, um, native plants that people would be able to use to, you know, as the water prices go up and as, as we have more developments in places where there's not very much water and not very much augmentation, we need to come up with something. And, and we're looking at that as an opportunity, especially alongside working with the school and if they get their greenhouse, to be able to, to come up with a, you know, an easy place for people to go find the plants that you can, that you can put in your garden, that don't take a lot of water, don't turn into noxious weeds and run all over, cause that's a typical thing that happens when people get a site-adapted plant. The next thing you know, it's knappweed and it's everywhere, so, yeah.
Well, I just was sure we were gonna end up on the roundabout.
Yeah, I don't know, that, uh?
Come up with that.
Cause it is, it is, it's.
It was on that poster that they showed us in Wetmore.
I didn't even notice.
Oh, you didn't? First thing I noticed.
Well, first thing I noticed is they had left the E off West Cliff, so I thought maybe it was not really.
Tom Zabraya gets stuck on it, not get out. There goes Big Ben again.
Silver Cliff, if you put the E in to Cliff, those are five words for them too.
Yep, leave our Es alone.
Silver Cliff.
Okay, um, so do you need anything else from us for your deadline tomorrow?
If you would have time to, uh, just to review that used to be called the intergovernmental agreement, now it's called the MOU, and I can email it to you soon as I get back to the office. With that new name, it doesn't need to be signed, but it's sent in as a draft and I just don't like to sneak up on people, so if there's something in there that?
You will send it to all of us, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, we've got it if you just change the I G A to MOU, if there's no other changes.
Oh, is that?
Yeah.
Yep, that's it.
I read it, it was fine.
So do you, would you like us to, uh, take action on that and sign it? Are you gonna have anyone else sign it, either Town of West Cliff or?
We can't really sign it because at the top it says, you know, because you have received this grant, now you're doing an MOU.
Okay.
Although if we, maybe if we do it, they have to give us the grant, is that the way it works?
Yeah, it says, and received a grant, so we're a little cart before the horse there, yeah, I got it, okay.
But what I could do?
You don't wanna wait on that?
The MOU, yeah, yeah, I think so, but what I can do, if, if you're comfortable with it, is to just say that it's been through a preliminary review by the?
Preliminary, we don't see any major issues with it.
We agree in concept.
Oh, perfect, see? Everybody's a wordsmith.
Right, okay, very good.
Excellent.
All right, anything else, ma'am?
Do you need anything from me?
I don't think so, uh? Did you get the, a tested copy?
Not yet. I do?
She handed it to you.
Yeah, I gave it to you, but it came, it's right on top right there.
Oh.
But it came out as two-sided, do you want me, will that work for you?
Yeah, I'll just scan it in the other way.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect, perfect, thank you so much, I very much appreciate your time.
Appreciate it, we'll look forward to big things down there.
Yeah, well, I think it's gonna be really good, I'm just so excited to have this be one of my first projects. Thank you.
We're glad you're doing it.
Yeah, well, we'll see how it looks in two years, it'll all be done by December of two thousand twenty.
Nice, all right, thank you. Okay, that concludes our, uh, new business. We do have public comment section, um, if anybody has public comment. Very good, if not, I would like to take about a five or six-minute recess and then we'll go into an executive session. Perfect, okay.
Bang that gavel.
Good to see you, thanks for coming in.
Uh, we have a executive session scheduled after our new business, Ms. Gady. Uh, what was the result of your last phone call?
Um, Virginia has to get, pick up her grandson, um, and would not be back until about eleven. Um, she said we either can do it at eleven or we can do it Friday.
What's probably doing tomorrow? I don't get why other people are starting to schedule our executive sessions.
Don't take that wrong, but he's right. This is, this is our business, this is our job. Picking up your grandkid may be important if the child's sick or it's an emergency, but it is not part of your job.
The only issue here is we finished early.
Well, let me share you then the discussion I had with, uh, Virginia when I invited her to the executive session. She informed me then that she would need to be done and gone by two o'clock today. And I felt like we could make that happen, so I said that was fine. So there was nothing, I was not aware that she needed to go pick up a grandson.
We did have a lot on the agenda that got?
Cancelled it, it wasn't, um, out of, so, so you're right about it, that there's circumstances on this one. I'd like to finish it by eleven thirty.
Apparently she's not able to meet tomorrow, is that the indication of Friday or?
Um, evidently not.
You're just relaying information you've got.
Yeah, I can ask her.
Why don't you ask her real quick? Then make it easier to do it tomorrow.
Tomorrow's okay? So you still say same time you would not be available? Okay, okay, thanks.
Still have a problem tomorrow with school?
She would have the same issue tomorrow that she has to go get him. But she wouldn't be available between ten thirty and eleven.
That's good pleasure.
Tomorrow's agenda would probably be, you know, longer because of? It's a very changeable today.
Well, I, I, when you ask for a pleasure, my, my comment would be, I'm very disappointed, but there's absolutely no purpose to have this without the supervisor involved.
Right.
So I'd say, let's postpone it till she finds it in her ability and wisdom to come visit with us. I don't know how to say that, I mean, I'm, I'm, to be honest with you. I mean, should I come crashing into tomorrow's B O C C meeting at ten and say, oh, I'm sorry, I had to go, you know, deliver something in the morn-? No, I don't do that, we have an obligation.
I agree.
Uh, I would take that as a motion to postpone until Friday.
Uh, let's do it tomorrow.
She can't.
She, I thought she said she couldn't, she, why?
Well, okay, so as far as she can do it?
Well, we don't know that.
Well, that's true.
She can do it tomorrow, but she's not available between ten thirty and eleven.
Let's do it Friday, I'll move that, we postpone it till Friday.
Wait a minute, wait, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, we, we've got that, uh, show and tell with the strategic plan.
Is that Fri- that's Friday?
That's Friday, and that'll take up, uh, some time, uh, and I don't know that it could, or it might not, I don't know. I mean, it's gonna be, maybe it'd be a better deal to try to do it tomorrow, cause we're probably gonna run through the, we could run through the ten thirty hour, I'll bet you, because?
You're only twenty minutes off from all the big now.
Yeah.
So she would be unavailable between ten thirty and eleven, is that my understanding correct?
Okay, then let's move it, I, I agree with you, we'll, we'll be here later tomorrow, we got a whole agenda tomorrow.
Okay, I'll second the motion, then moving second, postpone the executive session until tomorrow. Uh, it's not debatable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing nay, motion carries. Any further, Chair would entertain the motion to adjourn.
Uh, before we do that, I actually have one question, if I may, please. Last week, I remember before, there was a hastily called meeting of multiple counties to discuss the district attorney. I learned about it the day they were having it, that evening, I could not attend, but I really wanted to. Has anybody heard anything from that meeting?
Uh, I didn't see anything.
I have not heard directly from the meeting, but I heard what the meeting was about.
I knew what it was about.
Okay.
I was wondering if they were voting about confidence and if they were going to?
I'm assuming Mr. Byerly attended that meeting, he told me he was going to, I'm having lunch with him today, I'll?
Good, I'd like to know what the outcome of that was, cause if they gave her a vote of no confidence or any shit in recall, I'd sure like to know about it.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll have that conversation at lunch, that way I can write off my lunch bill.
I'm not going there, but you go to the Hilton for lunch, that was a joke.
No, only upstairs goes to the Hilton, I go to the El Gante, so tomorrow? Uh, your point well taken, Commissioner Canada, thank you about Friday, that's right, we've got stuff going on Friday.
It will be with visitors, so it'd be a good thing to do it.
Now, what, I don't have the stuff you were talking about written down though.
The?
You said we're gonna have a?
On Friday she'll be here.
Right.
We're gonna, she's gonna explain the process, she's gonna explain, uh, what the committees are gonna be doing, the two, the committee and the task force. And, uh, we wanna talk about, um, the questions, the questionnaire, because the intent is to get it between now and then, get people to, like Kelly and all the people that attend the meeting to help rewrite those questions, to make it directly applicable to us and what we think, not what somebody else had an idea before and used a canned thing that they, they've already broadcast. She'll also have the sixty-seven questions that were answered, you know, and say, here's what we've got from that first shot that we drew, just to have, just to see and discuss and, you know, get the team kinda thinking about it. So then we wanna get, the result of that meeting needs to be, um, we're gonna get, these people are getting questions to her, she'll rewrite them, she'll run them through us between now and, uh, you know, either the next meeting or the meeting after, and we can approve the new questionnaire and the process to get them out. I, I told her I didn't wanna just throw it on the county website and get people to go to it. It needs to, you could have a hard copy printed in the stores if we wanted to, to hand out, we could, we could get hire some high school kids to go door-to-door, Boy Scouts or something, you know, to, to help really get the county excited about this and answer this for me, mom, you know? So we get a good cross-section of input back so that on the seventh of January, it doesn't have to be completed by then, but it, we've got a good start on, on what we can use with the task force to go and take it and start develop, however she's gonna have us start talking about the strategic plan. So that's what we need to do.
We need to be done by?
That's right, that survey would have to be done, and a lot of it, if we get it done in time, a lot of it will be, being done over Christmas or, you know, whenever, to, to make sure people are aware that it's there. I wasn't even aware they put it out the last time they did it.
I wasn't either, someone told me then, I went to the website and found it before it was pulled out, I go, wait a minute.
Yeah, I come at it, and it's a bunch of stuff that doesn't apply.
Absolutely, so I, I, I appreciate the way? Absolutely, so, I, I, I appreciate the way you're doing it, I appreciate, I saw the invitation to all the departments to please come join us if they'd like to, and that is the right way to do this, let's get as many people involved as we can to come up with the best plan we can.
Right, and then we can discuss membership of the task force, too, to make sure we're not, I mean, let's go get a survivalist out there if we think that's important, you know, whatever.
We don't want it heavy on one side, we don't want it heavy on another side, we'd like the ship floating as level as we can.
And I don't care if they're, and she even said, if it, if it's a negative person that's gonna always poo-poo something, fine, get them in there, because what it does, it gets them, the other people talking, and they'll say, oh, he's got, it gets them, uh, it changes their, their angle a little bit, so...
I can't tell how long it's... I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I don't have any time, people calling me to yell at me as a commissioner, and they're shocked when it turns, I say, you know, that's a very good idea, I hadn't thought about.
Right.
So, having a negative person is not a problem.
Yeah, I don't mind that either.
So, that's all gonna occur during the meeting?
Yeah, that's what it'll be, and it's, because she's the only thing on the agenda, basically, new.
Right.
Uh, and it's an opportunity to meet her and understand how she, how this process works. And, you know, we can show people the copy ahead of the Pasadena examples again, blah, blah, blah. But I only showed you three or four pages of that, there's twenty-five pages to...
Okay, well, tomorrow afternoon, uh, there is a site tour of the proposed AT&T Tower site.
I didn't know that, where is that?
Right on the sheriff's, sheriff's, right outside his window.
And here's the, I don't know that it's an issue, but we may have a conflict if we are
Okay.
running late and in the executive session.
Oh, that's true.
Evan Brooks told me that that would be midday, that they would probably finish up by one or one-thirty, and I said, well, we have a commissioner meeting, uh, we'll get out there as soon as we can.
We can kinda push tomorrow, we've got some, uh, staff reports, right?
You're right, we could balance by putting maybe some tomorrow onto, uh, Friday. Yeah, but that would change the agenda, we really can't do that without twenty-four hours.
We've got to re-tack the grant app for tomorrow, and...
Most of that, uh...
Hopefully, I don't expect the personnel issue to take a long time.
No, it'll be...
The executive session, but, uh, and I apologize for not telling you last week in Wetmore about this AT&T site event, so...
Are we gonna meet here?
No, we will walk out here and meet at the site, which is obviously south of the sheriff's office.
They need to tell us how tall that is.
It's a hundred fifty feet.
Hundred fifty.
It's monopole, one single pole.
And they're gonna decorate it for Christmas for us?
Absolutely.
They're gonna have to, they build it that quick.
Halloween, we will not, we will not decorate it for Halloween.
No, it's a little late.
Grant show with everyone dressed up for Halloween, and I told her that's gonna be...
I did, I'm Johnny Cash without his hair.
There you go.
Miss Kelly, tell them how Miss Hood came last Halloween.
I saw her, I was here personally, and so I sat in that chair right back there.
I sat there and said, oh my God.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's fine to be fun, but that was over the top, that was pretty cool, that was different.
Okay, uh, now the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll adjourn.
Moving second into adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnae, motion carries. Counselor, I don't remember you voting on that.